All right. I'd like to call this public community order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry, Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Gahn.
Here.
Mr. Rogan.
The purpose of this testimony is to do your testimony in the form of following Council第六, two thousand and eighteen, establishing first parking on the east side of the nine hundred block of Olive Street from nine twelve Olive Street East to Quincy Avenue, and on the north side from nine fifteen Olive Street East to Quincy Avenue.
I'll review the speaker's signing sheet. There's no one on the list. Does anybody from the audience like to speak? Since there was no one to speak on the matter, the public hearing is closed. Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women and for all those who have lost their lives in our community in the past week. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Gahn.
Here.
Mr. Rogan.
Here.
Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, three A, tax assessors' results report for hearing date held February twenty one, two thousand and eighteen.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
Three B, check received in the amount of forty-three thousand, five hundred, sixty dollars from the Commonwealth of PA for two thousand and sixteen, Act forty-seven grant reimbursement for two thousand and seventeen.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
Three C, minutes of the Lackawanna County Land Bank regular meeting held February nine, two thousand and eighteen.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time?
Yes, I have one. Just announced that the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or the CAPR report, will be available in OECD from Wednesday, March fourteenth, until Wednesday, March twenty-eighth for public comment and review. The CAPR reports cover the Community Development Block Grant Program, the Home Investment Partnerships, and the Emergency Solutions Grant Program. And that's all I have.
Two announcements. An executive session was held, a brief executive session was held prior to our meeting tonight to discuss a personnel matter. And secondly, I would just like to remind all speakers that per the council rules, any questions should be presented in writing. One of my colleagues did remind me of that in our caucus today. Are there any other announcements?
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Ron Ilman.
Good evening, council. I hate to be first because I realize it makes it, it puts you in such a bad frame of mind for all the ones that follow me. But before I start irritating everyone, Friday, I went to see the Clydesdales with Rosie and these big, beautiful animals are really something. When we got there, their place was packed and that was like three o'clock. We were standing there looking and five, six, seven people went up to this big horse. He didn't move a muscle. They petted him and taking pictures. He never moved. Then, right next to me, this mama pushed a little child up in a wheelchair and the horse, he turned and nudged her with his nose real gently. I just, just surprised. Then she turned the chair around so she could take a picture and the horse did it again. It was just like that horse knew this beautiful little child had come and was something special for him, you know? I've seen these animals a lot of times in Memphis at the parades and they, they are exceptional. And last week, in reference to your united neighborhood, that hundred and twenty thousand, nobody seems to know nothing about it. You don't, I asked if, who's paying the taxes on the building? If they're paying rent? If the bank's paying rent? Do you know?
Not at this point, but that'll be part of the process. It's a nonprofit, so there's no taxes.
Is the CEO being paid right now? Is there a staff? Is there lawyers? This acts like it's going to come out and just enhance a bunch of attorneys like the sewer calamity did. I'm not against it, but I tell you one thing, every last woman should be an American citizen. I don't care where they came from, what color they are, anything else, they should be an American citizen. I don't know if any of you'll ever go to the Southside Complex and watch them play ball. It's like being in Mexico. That's, that's what's turning us into a third world country. This isn't, this shouldn't be. And I got quickly, one block from me, two blocks up. I know everybody's familiar with Parker and Maine where they, what is that, all this light stuff going on? Last week, you mentioned it cost a couple hundred thousand to put a light at, what, on Green Ridge or somewhere? I don't remember. They have spent a month down there. They've made holes all over the place, lights and poles, there's five poles. And when they finish, it's not going to do any more than that damn traffic light that been hanging there for fifty years. What they need to do, of course, there's some guy in Harrisburg doesn't, probably never been to the city, that should have been a four-way stop for years. Every time someone turns left, there's traffic all the way to the Pepsi-Cola plant, which is probably a half a mile. Why didn't they take this money and fix the bridge a half a block up? Twenty-five-year bridge, half its life it's been semi-closed. I just take it for granted, Mr. Mays, with his, must have been in charge, the man that's with his crop circles to get to the airport and building a bridge by the inches for three years to cross a little tiny creek. If these people, if they can't do better, I just, I'd like to know what in the world all this money was spent on Parker and Maine for. What they should do is put a camera up there because twenty-four, seven cars are speeding and run the light anyway. Well, what are y'all going to do about the vote on the, the hundred and twenty thousand dollars?
Which hundred and twenty thousand dollars is that, Mr. Ilman?
I was just wondering. I saw the paper, I thought it was passed or something, you know? But it was sort of an incomplete article. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Edward Marcherick.
Hello, forgive me, this is my first meeting. I don't understand quite how things work here, but my question is about calling the police to noise disturbances at the building where I reside. There's a neighborhood watch sign literally fifteen feet outside the front of my door and I called the neighborhood watch to dispatch the police and I told them my neighbor was yelling, screaming and cursing, stomping on the floor, pounding on walls. And then when the two officers came, naturally, the woman, she just looks out the window and sees the police car pull up. And then the police say, Scranton Police, knock on the door. And she instantly calms down and her daughter, they calm down and they say, oh, well, that guy next door, he calls about everything. He calls on every little complaint. There's been numerous complaints with the previous tenants and all of us in the building about it. My landlord told me to get a report from the police department, of the report of the calls and complaints against this neighbor and having trouble tracking that down. And when I asked the police about this, they said, oh, well, they're two Italians. Italians are loud, they're going to argue, you're just going to have to deal with it. So today, I went to the police department and asked for the log, a list, log with, to get the amount of phone calls, the disturbances to the address, and they told me there were no phone calls to that address and that only my landlord could get it. My landlord, Scranton Housing Authority, she told me I was the one to get it. So I'm just confused as to who I would talk to or follow up with this.
Now, do you live in a, is it a housing authority?
Scranton Housing Authority, yes.
Housing authority-owned building?
Yes.
Okay. Well, they're your landlord, they have a level of responsibility to maintain the peace and quiet of the property, so I don't understand why they're telling you to do all the work.
Well, I could call security after six-thirty, but this was during the day. And when I call the police officers, as I said, they come there and they say, oh, they're Italians, you know, you've got to deal with it.
Well, you should always call the police, but, but the reality is that the landlord has a level of responsibility that they should be trying to take care of any disturbance within their property. So I really don't understand why they're asking to do all of this.
Right. And then when I go to get this, the landlord said, if you can bring me a report showing all the times the police were dispatched to this address, we can start eviction hearings. And I go to the police department today to get the report and she said, we can only give it to the landlord.
Well, then, then I would tell the landlord exactly that and let them get the reports. They should be doing it on their own.
Okay. I just figured because it was Scranton Housing Authority, they've been dealing with the situation.
What building is it?
Washington Plaza over on Olive Street.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Cindy Sanchez.
No problem. Thank you. Bob Bowles.
Cindy, Cindy, you just want to hear it on TV.
Bob Bowles, Scranton. On the mall, there was a five-dollar charge for parking for the St. Patrick's Day Parade. This is the third year in a row. First year was five, second year was ten, this year was five. Mr. Gahan, you're great proponent of transparency, and I don't come here in a negative way, but I come here in a way that I believe you should be doing your job. I asked you to get me an answer. Have you found that answer out?
We just sent a second request. We haven't heard from ABM yet or in DC.
Did you think about stopping at the mall and asking the question?
No, I didn't. We usually send correspondence when we get a request.
Well, don't you think you're being ignored at this time and that it would be maybe prudent? Stop at Boscov's, buy a shirt or something and go ask them. Where are our spaces? You've got to go look anyway. Maybe they're on the roof, maybe they're somewhere else, we don't even know, but we spent millions of dollars. And you talk about transparency. In my companies, we go out and get the job done. We'll send you one letter and then we want an answer. Okay? This I put to you and I'll ask the council president to please assign this mission to Mr. Gahan, that we eliminate this issue. So I don't have to waste my time coming here, even though I'm his employer.
Well, the council members don't answer to me, Mr. Bowles, but if.
Well, they got to answer to somebody because apparently we're not getting the job done.
We just sent a second request, so.
No, I don't want to hear any more requests.
Well, then, you're not going to get an answer then.
Mr. Gahan, I've been going on this issue about the money being paid to the mall and where's our money?
Well, then, maybe, well, then, maybe you should go down and get a shirt from Boscov's and ask them.
Maybe I'll have to do your job and then I'm going to come back and it's going to be very insulting to you that the individual that pays you had to go do your job. You're right. Maybe it's time you were taught a real lesson about politics. You complained about transparency here. You complained about transcribing here, you weren't aware of it. Yet you've got four other council members. I'm sure there's dialogue somewhere, then you come out yelling about it, oh, I wanted this or I wanted it. Don't play politics with us anymore because we're a little sick of it. You know, you were clueless about it, then you're saying you were for it, then you're against it. Personally, I think it should be done. If you read an article in The Times this past week, they went over and they read a record. Don't listen to something hour after hour. Go through the pages, get where you need to be. I think you ought to put it back in here. I think it's important to us to be able to go read the record, not waste our time licking, waiting for a half hour for the issue to come up on TV. Time is money and it's costly to every one of us. So I think it should be put back in here. It's a minimal amount for the money that's squandered in this city. You have a garbage fee, and that's the key word here, fee. It's a taxation without representation because we're already paying a fee in our taxes, the school tax, the county tax, the city tax to get rid of our bloody garbage. And now you add three hundred bucks more to us. Yet, Mr. Gahan, in the rest, I haven't seen one of you put a motion on the table to create a one percent fee across everybody on their gross. Now the university and everybody else has to pay, but you're afraid of the political uprising that'll happen if you go after the university and some of the nonprofits. It's transparency, make it happen. Think about the people, not about your political career because that controls it, is getting the job done for the people. You should be paying. Our fire department goes out there to get peanuts to go there. They should be paying fee because if they want fire protection, they're a nonprofit, they're not paying for it, then they should get their own fire department and police department. Why should we pay them to do their job out of our pocket, yet you won't go after them? Put a fee on everybody. You'll eliminate the garbage fee. You'll eliminate a lot of burden on the people in the city. I haven't seen any of you guys at the school board meeting holding them accountable. Transparency, if you want the word, I'll use it all day long here. Okay? I listened to it for the whole campaign, yet I haven't seen none, the garbage fee, the parking garage, the money that went in for the spaces, that we get any of it back. And I've been talking about it for three years. It's not just something that happened. But yet you did, call me a skunk, we're this and we're that, you're starting to smell like one.
I must have really hurt your, I must have really hurt your feelings because you bring it up every time you speak about the skunk.
Well, it was an insult to me and I think it's something I'm giving you back because guess what? You joined the skunk family, now you're starting to smell like one. Get the job done. That's what you're here for. Okay, my employees do their job, that's why I got them. You know, you can't be sitting here asking the people to do stuff and you don't go do the job you're supposed to do. I will go to the parking authority and I will go to the mall and I'll come back here next week with your answer. And I'm going to embarrass you because I had to do your job.
Listen, you won't, you won't embarrass me.
That is beyond that.
You won't embarrass me.
No, I know it won't. That's unfortunate. You should be embarrassed that we have to do your job.
Listen, you do a good enough job of that yourself every time you speak. I said, you do a good enough job of that yourself every time you speak.
That's right.
And maybe you should look up the word skunk in the Russian dictionary.
I am, I'm looking at it. You brought it up.
There you go. We'll give it to us in Russian.
Mr. Gahan, you brought it up. You're in a, you're in a skunk.
Mr. Bowles, your time is up.
I understand.
Thank you. I know you guys could go back and forth all day.
Maybe I'll put one in a cage, you could understand what they look like.
There you go. That's great.
Have a good day.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles.
Have a nice night.
The next speaker is Les Spindler.
Evening, council. Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. I wasn't going to start with this, but I agree with Mr. Bowles a hundred percent. They've come to these meetings for about fifteen years now. Council doesn't care about the people of this city. Just do what you want to do. You don't listen to us. Come here, year after year after year, nothing is done. We've argued about go after nonprofits. You don't do that. Mr. Bowles has good ideas all the time. Mr. Gahn, if you did as much for this area as Bob Bowles did, it'd be a credit. The man's a credit to this area. If you did half the stuff he did, you'd be all right. And this garbage fee again, Andy Spragley came here last year and said, council does nothing for the people, and Mr. Wexler arguing with him. Andy's a hundred percent right. You don't do anything for the people. You keep passing these taxes, and Bob spoke about the three hundred dollar garbage fee. It's illegal. We pay our property taxes, have our garbage picked up. We shouldn't have to pay any more money, but you people don't care. And yet you're reelected. And Mr. Rogan, I've voted for you every year you run, but I'm losing my patience because nothing is done for the people of this city. I bring up issues here, nothing has ever been done. Going to bring up one that I've talked about for fifteen years now. Dangerous dogs. Story in the paper today about humans being killed by animals. And dogs are the second biggest killer of humans. I was surprised to see that the first killer is bees, wasps, and hornets, but second in line is dangerous dogs. I've come here for so long, I knew people don't have any answers. You don't look into it and you want to get reelected? It's just ridiculous. You don't do a darn thing for the people. And that's why people like Mr. Bowles and I get upset, Mr. Gahan, because we come here year after year after year and nothing is ever done except raise our taxes. That's all you people know how to do. And half of you up there don't even pay attention to what we're talking. I guess that's all I had to say tonight, but, you know, if you're not reelected next time, just remember the words that all the speakers say up here because that's the reason because you don't listen to what we're saying and it's a damn shame. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Spindler. Joan Hodowanitz.
Joan Hodowanitz, Scranton resident and taxpayer. I'm going to hand Kathy my written questions. And I will now read them for the general public to hear. Number one, what is the status of the Arcadia study? Will there be a public caucus? If so, when and where? Number two, will the city sue the county to force a reassessment? And number three, why is there no stenographer here tonight? Have we done away with transcripts of city council meetings entirely? Those are my three questions.
Can answer a couple of them. The stenographer, this meeting will be transcribed as every meeting has been this year. The stenographer just isn't here today, so she will be transcribing it, the YouTube video. Regarding the reassessment, I'm going to talk about that a lot, so I'll talk about that under motions, but it's definitely under consideration. And we have a meeting tomorrow with the county on that, on that issue. I know Councilman Evans brought that up in the caucus. I don't know if he cares to answer. We asked for an update today, so we should have something for you to answer next week.
Okay. Now, a lot of good news. I have in my sweaty little hand, a press release from Jack Finnerty, director of the Scranton Public Library. The Albright Memorial Library will officially reopen on Monday, March nineteenth, at nine AM, and it's a thing of beauty. So I hope that all the city residents take advantage of it. It is a great resource for children, for adults, for everybody, not just for entertainment purposes, but for all kinds of education. So it's back, better than ever for the next hundred and twenty-five years. Also, I'd like to give kudos to the police department and DPW on the way they handled the parade on Saturday. I've been living downtown now for, it'll be nineteen years on March twenty-fourth, and I can't tell you the number of years that I had to endure rowdy drunks and my car was vandalized twice and a lot of incidents. And I'm not aware of any incidents that occurred this Saturday and cleanup was pretty good with one exception. If you're going to march in the parade, as I did, you should not be behind the Clydesdales. Lot of pooper scooping going on, lot of poopers, so just don't do that. Take my word for it. Okay. Item five B, I was going through the backup exhibit A, I would point out that paragraph five has a typo, whereas section three BII of the MOU states that, quote, "The city will disperse the remaining one hundred thirteen thousand and three hundred thirty-three dollars, parentheses, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars." So the number in parentheses needs to be adjusted. It's off by twenty thousand dollars. I would not give anybody reason to claim they're getting twenty grand more than they need to. Also, kudos to the city on article in the paper on March ninth, Scranton has chosen to host the two thousand and eighteen Governor's Awards for the Arts. I think that's a real feather in the cap for, in the cap for the city. When you consider some of the personalities that show up for these award ceremonies, it really is quite a, an honor to be doing this. So hopefully, we'll see more publicity about this as the date for this award ceremony draws near, but we should publicize it. And let's see, with regard to the two ambulance companies that have expressed an interest or concern about serving the city, I do hope that if that gets into legislation, that there is a request for proposals and a little bit of research to see what we should have and what it will cost and that we just don't run into that Pell mail. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to address council?
Good evening, Marie Schumacher. I would like to start tonight by asking Mr. Evans, could you tell us what our current bond rating is?
I can't, but I will check that out for him.
Okay. The Arcadia study, I'm, I'm really confused about this because it was on the twenty-second of January that Joan Hodowanitz asked about it, and you said something to the effect that you were told that it would be, a pre-draft would be available within the next two months. And then last week, you said it didn't come up at the Pell meeting on Monday morning. So were both of those items from Pell?
There wasn't a Pell meeting, no, it wasn't from Pell. It just that the person that told me that was at the Pell meeting. The person, the point person right now is the city solicitor slash deputy mayor. We have a call in for her to find out exactly where we are with the study. We do expect the pre-draft very, very soon. That's all I can tell you. That's all I know.
Very, very soon is very, very ambiguous.
Well, until I talk to her, that's the best we can do.
Okay. Also, back at the first regular meeting, the eighth of January, a gentleman came here and told how he had to spend something like nine thousand dollars because he had not received his trash bill. And Mr. Rogan, you said you and Mr. Evans were going that very Friday to meet with people on that. Has anything been done to change the, the way the operations so that if, if something comes back?
That specific situation, when it was resolved, Wayne Becker, city treasurer, spoke, you know, we got them in contact and that was resolved. But as far as a bigger solution, that still hasn't been resolved.
Do we have any idea how many more people may have been similarly affected? Or how many come back and are never checked?
Yeah, and that's part of the, that's the problem.
Who's, whose job description is that in? Is that the treasurer's or is that that other company that co-resides down there with, with the treasurer?
Return mail, I would think, would fall in the treasurer's office. If it's returned to sender, because we provide the list, so if there's an error on the list, then that would be on the city.
Well, I hope that, also, how, how are we doing with the, with, I guess it's working with SAPA on, on condemnations and other things? What's the status of that?
Specifically, we're working with SAPA, trying to get a new zoning code, so that's one of the things I want to find out about. I'm glad you reminded me about that. But condemnation, is that something we're going to do internally? City council is going to work on that.
Well, I mean, I'm not going to go back and dig it out, but I remember you saying that would be done right after rental registration, which has been three years now?
Yeah.
I believe, so that would be helpful. And then. And then the other thing, one of my favorite myths that I've learned firsthand, the good intentions don't always produce good results. And 7F is, I know it's well-intended, and it's been in all of your, all of your attempts to get the city on its, back on its feet, and this is the first, although, as I say, I always am skeptical about shared services when the city can't even seem to get the pool chemicals bought along with the municipal rec authority. That seems to me to be a no-brainer, but if we can't do that, how much bigger? So I would like some idea, before you vote tonight, what do you expect to get from the shared services? I mean, how much are we thinking we're going to save? Or what's the goal? Is there any amount enough per metrics? I admit that, but...
We haven't even calculated that yet. The whole point of the committee is to get together to start to formulate some kind of idea of how much we could save. So the whole goal is to work together with the school district to, for example, take a look at purchasing and see who their vendors are. Do we share vendors? How can we work together in that way? And then the goal is to come back to council when we do have some kind of agreement and have a proposal for them. And then we, I think, would vote on it, like an intergovernmental agreement.
Okay. And how long do you think that's going to take?
I don't know. I don't think we'll know.
Is the first meeting set yet?
No, because the school district hasn't voted on their portion of it yet. I believe April is their next meeting.
Okay. Well, I guess back to the exit plan next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Fay Ferrantis, Scranton. Last week, I had a little problem, Mr. Rogan, with the way that you spoke to Marie Schumacher when she was referring to your vote for the garbage fee. Here's what you said. I wrote it down because the minutes weren't recorded anymore, so I had to write them down instead of printing them out. You said, "If any speaker that brings up something that's incorrect or partially true about my record or something I said is going to be corrected, whether it is my time or their time, it is going to be corrected." You implied that what Ms. Schumacher said was incorrect, and it wasn't.
Partially incorrect. I did, when I stated to you at the podium that meeting, I was incorrect, and I apologized for that later in that same meeting.
I just wanted to explain something. At that meeting, it was during the primary, and during the primaries, when all those flyers went out that said that you voted against the garbage fee, when I came to that meeting, I said, "Mr. Rogan, that's not true. You voted for it." And you said right to me, "No, that isn't true. I voted against it." Because it was primary, it was election time. But then in Fifth Motion, Fifth Order, you said, "Oh, I just want to set the record straight. I did vote for the budget." But nobody knew what that meant when they said you voted for the budget. They don't have a clue what that meant. What you should have said is, "I lied. I did vote."
I did not lie. It was incorrect, and I corrected myself.
No, you lied. I asked you, "Did you vote against the garbage fee?" And you said, "I voted against it." That's a lie.
You asked about a budget year. And that's why it was much more confusing.
No, I asked you, "Mr. Rogan, did you vote for or against the garbage fee?" And you said, "I voted against it." I'll bring the minutes next week.
If you want to continue to argue about a meeting, we could do that.
No, Mr. Rogan, I was trying to tell you that Marie Schumacher didn't say anything incorrect, and you misled the people because it was election year because you wanted to get elected. So now that you're elected, you have four more years. So I'm just telling you, you lied, and you should be a man and admit it, but you still don't want to. No. Another thing, you also said that you're no longer going to, you're no longer going to mention anything more. You're done talking about the minutes, and you're done talking about this. But that's not going to intimidate people. If people want to talk about, you may not want to, but if we want to, we're going to.
This is your time. You can talk about anything you want.
I know. But the way you said it, "I'm not going to mention this. This is the last time I'm going to talk about this." But if we have questions to ask about it, I hope you have the decency to answer them. Another thing. Thursday meetings, Mr. Rogan. I think the only meeting on a Thursday, when you used to have council meetings where it was Thursday, was Thanksgiving. And you used to go crazy when they didn't have the meeting one other day during the week, when the other council was in, was here. You used to go nuts, but you knew they wouldn't change it, so you looked good. You were grandstanding. Just like when they closed, they didn't have council meetings for the whole month of August. You would go, "Oh, I think that's terrible, terrible, terrible." Because you knew everybody was going to vote no, so you were okay by saying, "Yes, we should have them." But Bill Cortwright gets elected, you have no problem with having the month of August off. Now, you're not one word out of your mouth about, "Oh, how come we're not having a meeting during the month of August?" Isn't that amazing? You don't have to grandstand now because Bill Cortwright's the mayor. Now, here's something about the law, the Home Road Charter. I want to read this. This is the law of the city. "The council shall meet once a week in regular sessions in regular council chambers." Repeat, the council shall. The definition "shall" is "must." But yet you have six meetings this year that you will not have, and you will not have another day during the week. So you're already breaking another law. How many more laws are you going to have to break that we're going to have to put up with? Because you know we can't afford to take you to court. So how much more do we have to put up with the laws that you're going to break? Just like the garbage fee. Mr. Evans, did you find anything out about the study yet? It was two years ago. They got paid for the study.
Yeah, I asked today about it, and I'm going to get an answer this week, for sure.
You're kidding.
Well, DDP is the one that's doing the study.
I've been asking for two years for an answer.
Well, the state is doing the study. We're not doing the study, so I asked them again today.
You've told me that six months ago.
And that's what they told me six months ago. So I'm going to get an answer for you as soon as I can, but I did ask again today.
It's two years, Mr. Evans, two years. There's still no answer.
I agree with you. It's totally unacceptable.
Well, then you should do something about it.
We don't control the study. It's not our study.
Well, you certainly control something, because we're getting charged for a fee that we shouldn't be getting charged for, and you know it. Because you haven't given me an answer in three years about the garbage fee, and you could have, and you kept putting me off for three years. And what do we do about the laws that you're breaking? What do you think? Do you think that's our right that you break the law? The? Do you?
Fay Ferrantis?
You can't answer that, Mr. Rogan?
I'm not going to get in a back-and-forth with you.
It's a simple question. Do you think it's our right that you break the laws? That's an answer that should come forward from you.
Thank you very much.
That should tell everybody everything.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address council?
Good evening, council. Dave Dobson, resident, taxpayer, so forth. About three weeks ago, we had a president's day, and I mistakenly assumed that trash would be removed on Saturday in my neighborhood. So if they're going to change that, I'm all for the working guys, and I never saw the intelligence of making them work Saturday as opposed to taking Monday off. That's a stupid idea, you know? But irregardless, they probably have to be given an extra day's pay because they're working on a holiday, or they're paid holiday, and then they're working Saturday. So maybe we could get some policy out on that. And, you know, I sympathize with the small bag of garbage, but once again, I lived in a small town with privatized garbage and privatized trash, and I had too many bags of other people's trash on my lawn, and I did not appreciate paying for them. And even if I'm willing to pay the 300, I would appreciate if somebody's not using my lawn for a transfer station, too. That I wake up some morning and have, see them hauling out 20 bags, because then it's, "Well, see that? See that?" You know? He's got 20 bags of garbage. He should be paying way more than 300 a year. So now, we have to write a small audience here, and I came with the intention of talking about the recent gun thing. First of all, 80% of all gun deaths are caused by handguns. 80%. And now, there's a 66 and 33% divider in there. So 66% are suicides, 33% are killings with probably murders. And between the ages of 18 and 22, issues, mental health issues like schizophrenia rear their ugly head. Kids are perfectly normal and even possibly slightly intelligent till 18 years old, and then all of a sudden, some change starts coming. They start hearing voices, and that's when schizophrenia sets in. Now, as far as magazines, you're never going to get rid of with the grandfather thing, because I seen this happen during the '60s, where a lot of pistols were flying around unregistered because they were issued and sold before the 1968 Gun Control Act. And it was, "Oh, well, you don't have to register this one. It's grandfathered in." So now, probably those things are laying in some drawer rusting away, but some of them may still even fire, and they may still be in circulation. So if you say banned assault rifles, you would still have a lot of grandfathered assault rifles around. So if somebody was limited for civilian use to a five- or 10-round magazine, they would have to reload before they ever did that. Now, in the casino issue out in Nevada, what was that casino thinking? If I was, if I had been wounded out there, I would do that some, you know? They should have never left some yo-yo drag 50-some guns up into their hotel room. Like, what were they thinking? I mean, there's a point to where you can take civil liberties, and that's not one of them. In the school shootings, Columbine and Sandy Hook, neither were qualified to get their hands on a gun, and no gun was sold to them. Dylan and Klebold also manufactured pipe bombs in their bedroom that they detonated in Columbine. Now, the bottom line is, and I'd like to get to this just quickly, tasers and pepper spray. Please, call your senators and ask, there's a lot of talk about, a lot of talk about equipment teachers with handguns. I don't think so. Tasers and pepper spray. And then, if you had to disarm somebody, it's not permanent. It's not some little kid that brought his toy gun to school, and you see it out of the flash, and he's going bang-bang or something like that, or making noise with it. You know, please, call your congressman and tell him tasers and pepper spray, and maybe we'll get some intelligence on this. I had a little more, but I'm out of time. Have a good night.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address council?
Fifth order, five-day motions.
Mr. Perry, do you have any motions or comments?
Just, Mr. Dobson brought up a great point, and that's something that in the last four years, that I know the city of Scranton did fantastically, making sure every officer has tasers. It's so important to have non-lethal form of enforcement, and I can't tell you how many times they save lives on both sides of the badge. They're just very important, and I agree with you 100%. It's always good to have that tool to a police officer. It just, it just de-escalates things very quickly without any over-the-top lethal force. And going back years and years, officers didn't have tasers. And even up till a couple of years ago, they were kind of trading off, and one person would end shift. They go back and forth, and, you know, now everybody has one. Everybody's trained. The training department does a fantastic job. They all know how to use them, and that's just fantastic. I have some other comments that I'm just going to save for agenda items. That's all I can have.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Mr. Donahue, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I would like to first just thank the police department and other law enforcement agencies, as well as DPW, for a job well done on Saturday. DPW did a tremendous job getting the downtown cleaned up in a timely fashion. And as for the police department, you know, in addition to the parade, they also had a deal with a concert in North Scranton, and I think they did a fabulous job, and it's truly a testament to their professionalism that there were no major issues at all throughout the day on Saturday. And then I would just like to quickly just address the ambulance BLS designation that was presented us in caucus last week. We weren't, I wasn't aware of any issue until PA ambulance brought it up last week. So, but now that we are aware of this issue, we need for the city to do its due diligence before making a decision, and it has to be an educated decision. But that must originate with, within the administration and not by council. So I strongly urge the administration to meet with representatives from both ambulance companies operating within the city, to discuss their issues, and to also obtain an independent analysis of ambulance coverage, as was suggested in the Times editorial last week, if they conclude a change should be made. But, and that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, do you have any motions or comments?
Thank you. First, on the garbage fee, currently it's in litigation, as we all know. As much as we'd all like to do something about it right now, sadly, we can't because of that. On the dangerous dog ordinance, if legislation was brought before us, we would vote it up or down. So if the administration would like to draft legislation, then it'll come before us, and we'll vote on it. I returned last night from a short vacation in Charleston, South Carolina. In recent years, I've made the habit of visiting great American cities each winter when I can. Number one, to get out of the cold of our little part of the world, but secondly, to see what they are doing so well and why growth in some cities is so impressive. What I found in Charleston continues to confirm what I already know. Cities, especially the downtown or commercial areas, must be walkable, they must be clean, they must tell a story. In Charleston's case, it was the story of their history and architecture. They also have a vibrant arts and cultural scene. This has been a common scene of great American cities that are successful. They attract tourists, they attract residents, and they attract business. People simply want to live, work, and visit places like that. And we have a story to tell here. We have architecture in our downtown that compares with any city our size in the country. We have a history that goes along with those buildings and those that designed them, built them, and inhabited them. We have a walkable downtown that needs to be even more so. We have a clean downtown that also needs to be even cleaner. We have an arts and culture community that needs more of our support to grow even stronger. But we are at a crossroads, frankly. We either grow, or we economically die. We, and I mean all of us, need to take the next step to make Scranton the next great city like Charleston, like Savannah, Georgia, like Portland, Oregon, or even Austin, Texas. And there's many, many more examples like that. If we grow and strengthen our downtown core, we grow our tax base. That is good news for the city and for our neighborhoods. It's simple economics. To that end, I have been working for months with several local organizations to bring Jeff Speck, a renowned expert on walkability in downtowns, for a speaking engagement. Jeff Speck is the author of a book called Walkable City: How Downtown Can Save America. My goal, and the goal of others, would be to open the eyes of the community and government leaders to the endless possibilities for our downtown and our city. I'm hopeful this could be taken place sometime in the next few months, depending on Mr. Speck's schedule. Again, and I've said this before, all the demographics are telling us that urban living is preferred by millennials and empty nesters. The choices are, if we embrace the challenges, to do what is necessary, continue to attract those groups and others. And we can choose to do nothing and let this opportunity pass by, or we can choose economic vitality. One final thing, since on the Welshman up here, Happy St. Patrick's Day this Saturday, March 17th. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Gahan, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, just a few. I requested in the caucus, just some follow-up requests with the Civil Service Commission, the Scranton Sewer Authority, and ABM regarding some information that I've requested for the past few months. Received a few requests from citizens in the area of Rosanna Avenue about potholes there, so Mrs. Reed sent that over to DPW. Also, residents in the Pine Brook area sent a few complaints in about the softball field. Apparently, the locks were broken on the gates there, and there were vehicles driving on the field. I did have a chance today to speak to the Parks and Recreation Director, and that will be taken care of as soon as the weather permits. We did get a request in for an update on the West Lackawanna Avenue Bridge, so we did. did send that to DPW as well. And that's all I have this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gahn. Just a couple of comments. I want to echo what some of my colleagues said, thanking our police, our DPW, fire department, and local EMS for the great job that they did on Parade Day. I'd like to wish everyone a Happy St. Patrick's Day and wish my mom a happy birthday. Her birthday is St. Patrick's Day. So I'd like to wish her a happy birthday. On to some business items. Mr. Spindler brought up the dangerous dogs ordinance, and he's right that it has been brought up a number of times. And my position is similar to Councilman Evans, but a little bit different. I know a number of people who have pit bulls, and some of them are very nice. Some can be the sweetest dogs in the world. I know people that have other breeds that may not be considered dangerous, that may not be the nicest dogs. So a lot of it does have to do with the home. So if there was legislation to be considered, it's something I would have an open mind to, but it's not an issue that I would be, you know, that I feel so strongly about that I would be willing to spearhead it. I know that you feel very passionate about it because you had an incident that occurred to yourself, but that's my position on any kind of dangerous dog legislation, that I don't think you could outright ban any breed of dogs. Secondly, reassessment was brought up by one of the speakers, and I know it was in the newspaper. Again, Councilman Evans, myself, the mayor, members of the mayor's administration are meeting with the county commissioners tomorrow morning to discuss the idea of reassessment. I am optimistic that we are having this meeting, but at the end of the day, it needs to be known that if the county does not do what they are legally required to do, it can result in a lawsuit. Council already did take a vote on this issue. I believe it was towards the end of last year, and it was a four-to-one vote. If that vote was taken again today, I believe it would pass again. Anyone who watches these meetings knows we've talked at length about the reassessment issue, so I'm not going to get into it too much tonight, but I am looking forward to the meeting tomorrow, and I hope that we could at least get the ball moving in the right direction. Or if we're told no, at least then we have a resolution, and we know that we have to explore other avenues. So we will be updating the public on that next week, and that is all for tonight.
5B for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an amendment to the memorandum of understanding by and between the city of Scranton and Electric City Television, setting forth the terms and conditions regarding the obligations of ECTV to the city and the dispersment and use of educational and governmental capital grant funds by amending Section 3BII of the memorandum regarding the dispersment of the remaining two installments as more fully described in Exhibit A attached here too and incorporated herein by reference here too.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
Sub move. Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5C for introduction, a resolution, reappointment of Santa J. Corby, also known as Sandy Corby, 401 Williamsburg Lane, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18504, as a member of the Board of the Scranton Parking Authority for an additional five-year term. Mrs. Corby's prior term expired on June 1, 2017, and was held over to February 1 -- excuse me, February 21, 2018. Her new term will be effective February 21, 2018, and will expire on June 1, 2022.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
Sub move. Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A reading by title, file of the council number 8, 2018, and ordinance amending file of the council number 95, 2015, and ordinance entitled amending file of the council number 79 of 2015, and ordinance amending file of the council number 145 of 2007 entitled and ordinance renaming the emergency and municipal services tax to local service tax and by imposing a withholding of $52 for the calendar year 2015, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter by increasing the local services tax withholding from $52 to $156 for the calendar year 2015 and providing for an exemption from taxation for any person whose total earned income and net profits from all sources within the municipality is less than $15,600 for the calendar year 2015 under and pursuant to the Local Tax Enabling Act, Act 511 of 1965, PL 1257, 53 PS, Section 6924.101 et cec., and the Municipalities Recovery Act, Act 47 of 1987, PL 246, 53 PS, Section 11701.101 et cec., and their respective amendments effective retroactive to January 1, 2018. This tax is expected to generate approximately $4,810,000 in revenue in calendar year 2018 by enabling the city of Scranton to continue to levy the local services tax at the fiscal year 2017 rate for fiscal year 2018 for a total maximum local services rate of $156 for the fiscal year 2018 effective retroactive to January 1, 2018, and providing for an exemption from taxation for any person whose total earned income and net profits from all sources within the municipality is less than $15,600 for the calendar year 2018.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I move that Item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption File of the council number 5, 2018, creating and establishing special city account number as noted entitled Sorente Emergency Center for the receipt and distribution of grant funds from the Pennsylvania Governor's Office Law Enforcement Activities Appropriations Grant Funding in order to provide funding to convert the Sorente Memorial Army Reserve Center into an emergency services center.
What is the recommendation for the chair for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, file of the council number 6, 2018, establishing permit parking on the even side of the 900 block of Olive Street from 912 Olive Street East to Quincy Avenue, and on the odd side from 915 Olive Street East to Quincy Avenue.
What is the recommendation for the chair for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, file of the council number 7, 2018, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to disburse $6,000 from the U-DAG repayment account into which urban development action grants repayments are deposited. This will cover the city of Scranton's share of costs for the United Neighborhood Centers of Northeastern Pennsylvania to administer the continuum of care for Lackawanna County during the period July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018.
What is the recommendation for the chair for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of Item 7C.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, Resolution number 17, 2018, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a sidewalk easement substantially in the form attached here too as Exhibit A by and between PPL Electric Utilities Corporation and the city of Scranton for the STR 3B-3 structure across from the Neil Armstrong School identified as the easement area on the plan and meets and bounds description attached here too as Exhibit B.
What is the recommendation for the chair for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of Item 7D.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution number 18, 2018, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a memorandum of understanding by and between the city of Scranton and the Scranton School District, setting forth the terms and conditions regarding the obligations of the school district to the city and the dispersment and use of educational and governmental capital grant funds.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7E.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution number 19, 2018, as amended, authorizing the formation of a shared services committee in cooperation with the Scranton School District to explore shared services, costs, and expenses.
As chair for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7F.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. As I mentioned last week, I think this is really a great opportunity to work together with the school district, save taxpayer money, eliminate duplicative services, and I'm really looking forward to coming back to this council and to the public and presenting proposals where we can share services such as purchasing, legal services, to work together and break down these barriers, as I mentioned last week. And in my research, you know, sharing services is a common practice in many of the cities throughout Pennsylvania, New York, really across the United States. And many times, this is out of necessity because of budgetary issues, as it is in this case. But I do look forward to it. I want to thank my colleagues for putting their faith in myself and Councilman Donahue, and we will keep them up to date on our progress. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7F legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.